All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the September 10, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I like to call it to order and move to the approval of the minutes. That I don't see.
I don't see minutes in here to approve.
Didn't she get to them? Yeah. I'm sorry about that. They just, we've been short-staffed in the office, so we didn't get them out in time.
So we will defer that to the next meeting?
Okay. We do have to get on that, though.
Oh, yeah. We're two meetings short or behind.
Okay. Public comment for items not on the agenda this evening. Nobody? Chief? Nothing?
Chief or chief.
Nothing? You want to talk about your golf game, nothing like that?
No.
All right.
He does not want that in the public record.
Oh, true enough. Okay. Then we'll move right to mutual aid agreements. Chief Murphy?
I'm sorry, Karen.
Oh, Randy. Randy was going to go first. Sorry. Cut you off.
He's got another meeting. I was making sure you knew that.
Good evening. So we have one contract with you to consider tonight, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. So if you, you know, I know you've talked with us about the stormwater, state stormwater program requirements in the past, but I'm just wondering if you could sort of refresh us on those requirements and...
Sure. This is the Phase Two Stormwater Program, which is EPA mandated. It started in 2003 with the first Phase Two portion, and there was a permit that was handed out to municipalities then. And it's also known as the MS4 program, or the MS4 program is incorporated into it. And that's the municipal stormwater separation, sewer separation program. And it has a number of components to it. The first one would be public education, where we have mandated, we have to put out public messages and hit different areas, different portions of the public, businesses, residents, and so on and so forth. We also have to get public involvement. And what we've done in the past is we've gotten youth groups to come in and help us with marking storm drains, cleaning up the beaches, the waterways. We do that yearly. That's another portion of it. There's also something called the Illicit Discharge Detection and Elimination Program, which the requirements get more stringent and stringent as we go. We're actually in the second portion of the Phase Two Stormwater. And the first part, we have to, we had to go out and test all the outfalls, and then find out where there's illicit discharges, then find them, excuse me, and then eliminate them.
An example of an illicit discharge?
An example of illicit discharge is when, if someone has their washing machine into their drainage system, and it's tied into a catch basin. That's an illicit discharge. So we test for surfactants and things of that, or...
And then you have to trace it back to the...
And then we trace it back. We'll camera, do whatever we need, dye test, find out where it's coming from, and then speak to the resident and make sure that they eliminate that from going into the stormwater. And this year, in this phase of the program, the next four years, we have to even go further. We only had to go through that program once. Now we have to do it on a yearly basis. We have to test each outfall on a yearly basis. We have to do it in dry and wet weather. And we have to do a third of the system each year. So that's going to be very costly. And right now, we're developing the program, and that's what I'm here for tonight, is to develop it.
So that's with the contract with Wood Massachusetts?
Yeah, that's a portion of it, yeah. Also, there's another part of it is regulations for stormwater runoff control, which is basically handled by the planning and conservation at this point. But there's regulations right now, they had to get regulations in the first part of the program for one acre and over. And now they become more stringent as we go. And it's coming down to that they're going to want more stringent regulations from one acre down on smaller lots.
And what are they, is it fertilizer contamination, or what are they testing for?
It's all, it's fertilizer. It's not on a, it's for fertilizer, pet waste, anything like that.
Okay.
And then it's for construction sites also.
Okay.
So it's, sediment is a big one. That's considered a pollutant.
Okay.
If it gets into the waterways. Temperature is another thing that's considered a pollutant, because it affects fish and their environment, where they can go, oxygen in the water and whatnot. So there's, there's...
It seems like an all-encompassing mandate.
It is. And it's pretty costly.
Yep.
When I started, we had a $50,000 budget. I'm up to $75,000, and I'll ask for more coming up, because the requirements get more stringent. And I'm going to need more people or hire companies to come in and get some of this stuff done. The other components are post-construction inspections. We have a component of good housekeeping within the department, the DPW at this present time, and pollution prevention plans, which we have to have one, because the transfer station, it's called, it's a SWIP, Stormwater Prevention Plan, Pollution Prevention Plan. They met the criteria, so we had to get it planned for them. And then there's training involved with employees, which I do to all the employees all, every year. So that's costly. I'm going to bring someone in to train them on this program. And then there's BMPs, which are best management practices. And basically, that's for all our operations, as far as the DPW goes. So it's calibrating sanders during storms for salt reduction, clean catch basins. We have to sweep the streets.
Sweeping, yep.
And then we have to do, like, the populated areas more often, such as downtown. So we do that probably three or four times a year. And there's a list of those BMPs that we have.
Okay.
And those can get costly, but most of them we're already doing. And what we do is, we evaluate them at the end of the year, and then try to figure out how we can make them better.
Okay. So the one question I had was, and this came up in the context of some of the work that we did around the acquisition of the water company, and that was whether or not there may be state funds available for certain of these initiatives.
I looked into that, and the answer, simple answer is no. There's no funding for this. The last time I looked, there was 200, over 200 towns and cities involved in this program. And the grants would be so competitive, and there's not that much money out there, that they just don't... There are monies out there, but it's not specifically for this program.
I see. Okay.
If we were to put a, to enhance our program and put a structure in of some sort in an area where it needed it, then that possibly could be covered. But it's not. There's no funding for this specific program here.
Okay. And is this a clean water initiative, like, say, the Safe Drinking Water Act, where it's a federal mandate that comes down through state DEP?
Yes. It's actually a branch of the Clean Water Act.
Okay.
But I understand this is, it's a U.S. EPA mandate, but is there also a DEP mandate on this, or is it just flow-through? I think that's what you... It flows through. The DEP does have a lot to do with it. They basically manage our program for Massachusetts. We report to the EPA. You don't report to the DEP? Not directly, no.
Okay.
No, the reporting goes to the EPA. And we have to do a yearly report, which we're actually doing year one in the next, this phase of the permit.
And so this company is specific to the development of the tasks for this Phase Two?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions?
Just a couple, but thank you for the explanation. And it's just amazing how much work goes into this, and how much work you're putting into it. Yes. So thank you. So, and I understand that this is a revised agreement from what we've seen last time. And am I correct that we're talking about a, make sure we get it right, a maximum financial exposure for this phase of $55,500? Yes. And just in terms of what we're ultimately approving, we have an agreement with an Exhibit A. And then part of the Exhibit A is an Attachment A, which is actually the old agreement that we did not want to approve. Yes. There was their proposal. Sure. So I just want to make sure that when this is ultimately signed, we are approving the Exhibit A minus the Attachment A. But I mean, I think the revised agreement protects the town's interests. Thank you for putting forth the effort to make sure that we get this done. And I think this is fine. I think, I'm prepared to move forward with it.
Well, again, Joe, I appreciate all the time that you've spent in trying to help us standardize the contract practices for the town in a way that protects the interests of the town, so that we're not having to, you know, sort of reinvent the wheel every time we pick up one of these contracts, I think is the goal. So I appreciate that. And I just echo Joe's comment, Randy, you know, when you think of the Department of Public Works, you don't maybe think of all of the discreet tasks that you're responsible for, and, you know, the maintenance of kind of clean water through our storm drains, maybe not intuitive to folks. But, you know, as you're suggesting, I think it's not only costly, but time-consuming. And, you know, we appreciate the work that you've done and that your staff does to help us comply with these requirements.
Thank you. It's too easy to take this for granted.
Yeah.
And you don't.
Yeah.
And honestly, this is part of my public outreach right here, is I have to meet with the selectmen and discuss it, so...
The only thing I would just add to this conversation...
I thought you wanted to come, but...
I do want to come.
The only thing I'd add to the conversation is just that, you know, this is the realization of what we often refer to as these unfunded mandates through the higher branches of government. And this is how they manifest themselves. And it's not just the $55,000 contract. It's all the time that Randy and his staff put through. Joe works at a pretty good rate, but we have an attorney that works at his rate. And all, there's a lot of hidden expenses as well.
Well, and all the equipment that we utilize to, yeah. So, yeah, I agree. Okay. Any questions for the public on the stormwater program or this contract? Seeing none, I take a motion.
I move that we authorize the chair to sign a contract with Wood Massachusetts, Inc., to provide professional services in support of the town's implementation of year two of the MS4 stormwater permit.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Next up, mutual aid.
Good evening.
Appreciate it if you could take us through the mutual aid agreement that's on our agenda tonight.
Okay. So what you have before you are actually technically two separate agreements. One is a, it's a request for the town to adopt the statewide mutual aid law, which is Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4J, and then the statewide public works mutual aid law, which is Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4K. Both of these actually were enacted in 2010, but the town did not adopt them. And recently, and this is something that's kind of being requested through Mass. Emergency Management Agency, to kind of tie up some loose ends on some communities that never actually formally adopted these. Now, that being said, that does not mean that we did not have the participation in the mutual aid systems, both on the public safety side and on the mutual work side, because there are mutual, well, there are many other agreements that the town has already participated in that kind of cover us. So this is honestly more a formality that the state is trying to kind of clean up and make everything pretty. But basically, what both of these allow is that the statewide public safety, which is police and fire, and also some other things, such as community emergency response team, the medical reserve corps, anything like that, this would allow us to provide mutual aid to other communities in certain, what's it, a public safety incidents. It will also allow us to request mutual aid from other communities. Similarly, the DPW has similar provisions that would allow inspectors, water sewer officials, transportation officials, whatever the case, to request or to provide that aid. Now, the only distinct difference between them is that the public safety side is only in a public safety incident. On the mutual aid side, it also provides the ability that those services can be offered in a normal environment as well. So to support, I think it says, to everyday non-emergency operations. So that's basically the gist of it. I think the only formality that it would allow us as well is that it does kind of clean up a little bit of the language specific on if something happened in another community, on liability, that type of thing.
Yep. And you were explaining to me that this was just sort of an oversight? There was no issue with us not adopting it?
That's correct. Yeah, I think it was something that, and again, I don't want to point fingers at anybody, but I think that the person responsible for this at MEMA wasn't necessarily very, or didn't necessarily think that this was a high priority for them. So there's a number of communities specific to our local area that never adopted this. So now they have a new person that's kind of working in there, and they're trying to close up some of these loops and stuff like that. I have actually, and if you can see, the letter is signed by Chief Olson and by Superintendent Sylvester. So the three of us have discussed this beforehand, and I believe Chief Olson said he even reached out through his police counterparts, to which I have done through the fireside. And there is no opposition from any of the different agencies, so...
Okay.
Including the Mass. Chief Police Law, like, everyone asks us those answers. No bad things.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. Okay.
The one thing I would add, that the chief has done a great job of summarizing, but I would just add one other thing, is that this is the type of agreement and state initiative that the state really likes to see when you are seeking grant money. They like to see that you're participating in their programs. So to the extent we can do this, and it's harmless, no downside.
And to your point, I think, Chief, we talked earlier about just formalizing the indemnification or insurance issues with respect to providing aid in other communities. So I think that alone, to me, would be...
That's the way it's been explained to me from my, or from my regional director at Mass. Emergency Management, is that he said that that's, you know, to them, they see that as the biggest advantage of this. Because, like I said, there are other things that, you know, there's a statewide mutual fire plan, you know, that we already participate in. So, you know, it's, we're already doing this type of stuff. It's not going to change anything. We've always believed that we have that liability and that coverage under it, but this really clarifies it, so...
Joe, questions?
No, I mean, I think this is the right thing to do. I noticed that the statute allows for recovery from the state of the cost responding, and we need to keep track of transportation costs and things like that.
Yes.
I assume we've got the mechanisms in place to make that happen.
Yes, we do.
No, I think this is overdue. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Better late than ever. Right. And while I have you up here, was there any fallout from the recent hurricane? I'm assuming it was just heavy rain, really, here.
Yeah. With the exception that we do have one member of our department that is on a FEMA team, which is the, he's part of a FEMA disaster medical assistance team. His team was activated for it. Originally, they did go down to Florida. Now they've actually been redeployed to the Bahamas. So he's currently there now. Massachusetts did send another FEMA team that was, you know, that was requested through FEMA, not through the state, down to Florida as well. They were already returned. But no, even the places that were concerned about Massachusetts, specifically Nantucket and Martha's Vineyard, they did not have any issues. That storm kind of went off coast enough and all that stuff. So, yeah, I think we were fortunate for it. And even, to be honest with you, down in other parts of the country, we're much more fortunate. They did a, I believe they activated 16 of the swiftwater rescue teams from across the country to go down to Florida, Georgia, other places like that. And they didn't actually use any of them. They did a lot of training with them, but didn't actually have to use them for any rescues, so...
So just to piggyback on that, too, I mean, we talk about, every time we have one of these events, it seems, in whether it's our region or elsewhere in the country, the chief comes in, either of the two chiefs comes in, and they tell us about their staff members that are a part of these national response teams that go out and they help these other communities. And what that does is it underscores, to me, the value of these mutual aid discussions that we just had, whether they're mutual aid local, regional, statewide, national. When we have a problem and we get hit with that hurricane, it's nice to know that we can have a count on our counterparts across the country to come in here and lend us a hand when we need it. And it's guys like this...
Firefighter Sheard.
Sheard, right. And the police department members that are on these regional teams that make that possible. So I commend Firefighter Sheard and thank him for his efforts, but...
Good. Thank you. Any further questions? Any questions from the public on mutual aid? Chief Olson, did you want to say anything further? Are you...
No, I just think, like I said, it's just one of those things that just didn't get done, and it needs to be done, so just to sort of, and I'm sure it will help any time that we do need funding.
Yep.
Those are the things I was going to make sure you have them done.
Yep. Okay. Great. Well, thanks for bringing this forward to us. I would accept a motion.
So I move that we adopt the statewide public safety mutual aid law, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4J, and the statewide public works mutual aid law, Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 4K, that were originally enacted by the Massachusetts General Court in 2010. And I further move that the chair be authorized to sign the mutual aid opt-in form.
Second, any further discussion? Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor? Aye. I was so close.
You were.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know there's an address on there. I'm not sure if that person is current, so if you want to just get that back to me, I'll find out exactly who it has to go back to at MEMA.
Yeah. Great. Thanks, Chief.
I'm assuming, is the original in the packet this time?
Yes, it's out there in the blue folder.
Okay. Do we have any appointments this evening?
Three, I believe.
And they are both, they're all three are for the Veterans Council.
Okay. Great. Do you want to move those appointments to the Veterans Council?
Do we have any information on the appointees in our packet?
No.
So this is really pro forma. These folks are already serving on the Veterans Council, but the Veterans Council has been reorganized, and so it's really essentially taking members that have been sitting in one seat and just putting them in another seat, so...
And with that explanation, I move that we appoint Scott McMillan and Frank Curtis to the Veterans Council for a one-year term ending June 30, 2020.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. And I move to appoint Hank Maude to the Veterans Council for a two-year term ending June 30, 2021.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Now we have a series of votes, I believe. So the first one, if you tuned into our last episode, you know that the harbor master was here to share with us some additional information about the harbor dredging that is scheduled to begin in the inner harbor on October 1st. And so, you know, in addition to the crazy weather we've been having, the other reason to make a move to get your boat out of the water is the dredging activity, again, that is due to commence on October 1st. Harbor Master Corson had asked us to enact a special regulation relating to his enforcement authority if you fail to remove your boat prior to October 1st. We were in support, I think, conceptually, or I was in support conceptually, but we had some technical questions that we wanted to run by council before we actually adopted the special regulation. But I think that those questions were answered, and I know I'm ready to move forward, Joe. I don't know if you have any additional questions.
I am. I just want to make sure that I understand the procedures that are being followed after we do this vote. Because I understand it, under the town's general bylaw, after we do our vote, that it needs to be submitted to the environmental police for review and approval. And then after they review it, we then should consider any comments that they provide. And then if we have any changes, it gets resubmitted to the environmental police. Assuming that there are none, then after we approve it, and then after it's approved by, approved by the environmental police, a notice has to be published in the Hingham Journal, and copies made available through the harbor master's office on request. So do we have time to do that, all of that, prior to the commencement date of October 1st?
So in communicating with Council Coughlin, his recommendation was that we take this vote and condition it on seeking approval from the environmental police to the extent necessary.
Right.
And what that means is that all may be necessary. That might be their process. My intent is to reach out to their office and do what they ask us to do. It may be that, it may be none of that. It may waive it. So to the extent, we'll do what we can.
Right. But then...
If we can get it done before the 1st of October, then...
It'll have to be published in the newspaper as well. I just want to make sure that we conform to that.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, I think this is clearly, given the dredging work that's being done, this is absolutely necessary.
Right.
Any questions from the public with respect to this regulation?
Just one other comment. My understanding is that if people do not actually comply with what is being required, they can be fined up to $50 per day.
Per day. That's right.
That's correct.
So please comply.
Well, it's, and it's important. I mean, it's everybody's, to everyone's benefit to get that harbor dredged. The harbor master was telling me that they were doing an operation in the harbor, I think it was earlier, was it earlier last week it must have been? And sure enough, they ran it around in the harbor master vote. No, you know, it was, it was a brief thing, and they were able to free themselves.
I think Ken asked you not to say that.
But that's not a, that's not a thing that, you know, they were out of place and doing something. They were just in their channel, doing their thing. And sure enough, it's just so, the material is so overwhelming in there right now that it's, it's time.
Yep. Absolutely. I would take a motion.
I move to adopt a regulation pursuant to the Town of Hingham General Bylaws, Article 15, Section 3, that all vessels, moorings, floats, docks, and other objects be removed from the inner harbor prior to Tuesday, October 1, 2019, to enable the contractor to commence dredging operations. Any vessels, moorings, floats, docks, or other objects left in the inner harbor in violation of this regulation, unless expressly authorized in writing by the harbor master, are subject to a fine of $50 per day and immediate removal by the harbor master or his designee at the expense of the permit holder. The harbor master will seek approval of the environmental police to the extent necessary.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you all keep us updated on the progression of the process? Because I do think we need, to Joe's point, I think we need to get moving on it like tomorrow.
Certainly. It's got to be in the morning, yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. And now, my favorite part of the evening, the one-day liquor licenses.
This is... We're a philanthropic community.
Exactly. Well, no, the fall...
Is that for a spin?
I like it. I like it. I mean, the fall's busy. I think there are a lot of community events, and us, number of one-day liquor licenses. We've seen a bunch of these in the past. I think the chief's reviewed the materials. These have been successful events. And so, let's take them one by one, so the...
Basically, they're all...
Yeah, the Fruit Center, yep. So I see the Fruit Center event at Fruit Center Marketplace... Yeah, the Fruit Center, yep. So, I see the Fruit Center event at Fruit Center Marketplace.
That's for the October Wine Fest.
Yes. Any questions on that? Everything's in order?
Yes.
Okay.
So, then I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Mark Magnosa on behalf of Fruit Center, Inc., for the October Wine Fest to be held at the Fruit Center Marketplace parking lot on Saturday, the 5th of October, 2019, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bubbles and bubbles. So, is this a new one at Derby Street?
No, it kind of left here as well.
Okay.
Maybe named a little different.
Okay. And that space next to REI seems to be working, right, even, like, traffic-wise and just being able to contain the event?
Yes, and also recently our traffic supervisor, Jeff Hillway, was up there. It's the time of year with starting of our review for Christmas. And so, you know, we're doing those projects, the traffic flow and that. So, everything's up there.
Sorry.
The more you're gonna engage them.
Yeah.
He needs you on camera.
Hi. Yes, we've had an agreement with the Derby shops to keep a limit on the amount they're doing. So, this is a continuation. And they've actually made some changes to that area between REI and Coles, which has really worked out well. There's parking in the back, parking in the front.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
And the event is basically contained in that one area there.
Okay.
And they do have a detail officer present there as well. And also, we recently had the traffic officer up there reviewing all the traffic patterns for the upcoming holiday seasons, and also working in conjunction with the state. We hope we'll be out of that road before the wintertime.
Good luck.
I think the residents of the town would really appreciate.
I think so. And the other towns that are trying to make their commute back and forth.
And I noticed that proceeds, or at least part of the proceeds, are to benefit the Hingham Public Schools for this.
Yes.
And so, event, description of event and parking, is that where the, does it designate a detail officer anywhere?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the public? No. Joe, would you take a motion on that one?
Then I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Patricia McKenna on behalf of WSM Hingham Properties, LLC, for Bubbles and Bubbles, to be held at 98 Derby Street on the green space on Friday, September 20, 2019, with a rain date of Saturday, September 21, 2019, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And so, just backing up, the Fruit Center knows there's no rain date for theirs, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. The Ware River Farm Trail Run, this is a, this is a.
Another annual event, yeah. Yeah, they do two in the fall. They just had one a couple weeks ago. Most of their parking is up, actually, on the top of Turkey Hill. So, all the traffic flows down Leather Street. They use the existing fields up there. They don't allow parking coming in from the 3A side. That's just a little too congested, and it's a one-way bridge there. So.
Yeah. Okay.
And it looks like people are not self-parking. There's gonna be attendants there to park their cars.
Yeah, they're gonna be assisting them up there, yeah.
Yep.
That's great. Any questions? I'll take a motion on this one.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Jeffrey Petter on behalf of Zealous Beer Company for the Ware River Farm Trail Run to be held at Ware River Farm on Sunday, September 15, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay. Do I have this one? Yes. Okay. A Fork in the Road at the Hingham Shipyard Marina.
Yeah.
I think we should maybe give an award at the end of the year for the most creative event.
I was thinking about that.
This is in the running.
Big fan of Bubbles and Bubbles.
Yeah.
The name is actually, I think that's the, a lot of times, the vendors that are doing the serving and stuff end up applying for it. And that's the name of the company. But it's actually for the Hingham Marina, and it's an event that they're using to thank their customers. And I, it's also, I remember going, sitting on the planning and the zoning board hearings where they built that area over near the lift, specifically for one, for these types of events. So.
Yep. Looks good to me. Any questions on this one?
No.
All right.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Lori Cook on behalf of A Fork in the Road for the Customer Appreciation Evening to be held at Hingham Shipyard Marina on Friday, September 13, 2019, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. I am, Tom, I'm not seeing.
Yeah, I don't see that. It came in yesterday.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you talk to the chief about it while I get the paperwork up to Shands?
Yes. So, this again is another perennial.
They're having an event. It's the Hingham High School Rowing Association parents. This is their second, this is actually the third or fourth time they've had this event done at the Maritime Center. And it's a smaller group, around 70 or 80 parents. And, you know, and I should have backed up in, I think, well, we're waiting for the paperwork to come. But part of the whole permitting process involves not only the police department, but it involves the Board of Health, the building inspector, the fire department. So, whenever anyone applies for this, we review the whole setup and the plans to make sure there's sufficient parking. In this case, the parking will, they don't have enough parking on site, so they'll be using the bathing beach or Station Street. There'll be a detail officer to help assist in the traffic flow and the pedestrian flow, as well as monitoring any of the sales of the alcohol to make sure everything is kept on-site as well. They would not be allowed to take it outside beyond the dock. They couldn't go down the docks with it, and they can't go out on the street with it. So, we limit the area where the alcohol's.
So, the Maritime Center just did its fundraiser.
Yes.
And I heard that was successful.
Yeah, I wasn't around, but they, someone was telling me it literally looked nice with the tents, and they had, like, sail tents. And it was a lot of stuff they had. And I know, like, you know, the building inspectors, Mike Clancy, and then the fire department Lieutenant Napoli go down there and approve everything, because they had, like, fire pits there. And fire pits can't be under tents, which makes sense.
Yes.
So, there's a lot more stuff that people think. And then, you know, they sort of approved the setup to make sure that egress can be for the people and safety issues.
Yep.
And then the food inspectors, if needed, for the permitting. So, it's, I think the process, we've been doing it now for probably, what, three or four years?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And it's really working out, I think, efficiently, and people are finally getting used to it.
Yep.
So, I'd say most of these people are repeats. So.
Right. And what's the parking? I know the parking for the Maritime Center fundraiser was the bathing beach with both boat and best Chevrolet shuttling people. What's the, what's the?
We, they will allow some on-site parking there, but I've asked them to use Station Street. And I think most people are gonna walk over. But that's why I'm gonna have a detail officer to help assist with.
Okay.
And we're talking 70 parents. So, probably only 70 cars. It's not, it's not a very large-scale event. So.
Right. Okay. Okay. And the detail officer will be on-site at the Maritime Center?
Yes. Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Generally speaking, if it's, you know, anywhere from 70 to, everything over 70 people on town property, I really feel that there should be a detail officer just to help, to protect the interests of the town. So.
Tom, do you know if it was in the packet that was emailed? Because then we could.
No, because it just came in yesterday. And it's the reason for the revision.
I just signed it tonight.
It was an emergency added because their event is before our next meeting. It's this Friday. Yeah, I'm wondering if, given the chief's review of this, can we, can we approve it conditioned on the, on the paperwork being done, having been done properly, that I'll review with maybe Karen? I just feel bad for these folks that are trying to have this event. That's the only reason I'm.
Yep.
I don't know how it didn't get in the packet, but.
But we did receive something, but we're just.
We have. Yes. Yes. And she intended to put it all in there. It was, it had all the proper safety charts. She told me so. But I would, if you're gonna approve it, I would make it conditional on the, on the proper completion of all the appropriate, you know, documentation.
Right. And so, there's the appropriate insurance certificate that would be there.
Tip certification.
Yep. And certification.
It's all gonna be part of the packet. Otherwise, it wouldn't be approved.
The chief signs off on it. Right.
She did. I wonder if she brought it in to the other room?
I just went through her desk. I just don't know where she piles that. It wasn't on top of her desk somewhere. So.
Okay.
Did you wanna take a two-minute recess and make a call?
I've called her four times.
She's smart. She's not answering.
I mean, you know, I, I think this circles back to, while you were gone, the chief took us through all of the steps that somebody that wants to apply for a one-day liquor license has to go through in order for it to get to this stage. So, you know, given, given that sort of level of review by the appropriate town folks, I think that, and, you know, given the situation that we're in, where they need it for an event this Friday evening, I'd be comfortable. And because I think we have it somewhere.
We have it. We have all the paperwork. It's, I just can't put my hand on it. And what I would suggest is that you guys approve a condition to that completion of the paperwork. And if you'd like, I can run it by, I don't care who is the chair.
I think we can just condition it on.
Yeah. Yeah.
Scan. I don't say it to you. Okay. That's fair.
Yeah. Okay.
So, I move to approve the issuance of a special, I'm sorry, did you want public comment?
Oh, any comment on that? No.
So, I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Mark Mulfer on behalf of Hingham High School Rowing Association for the Fall Parent Social to be held at Hingham Maritime Center on Friday, September 13, 2019, with a rain date of Friday, September 20, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., subject to the receipt, review, and acceptance of all the appropriate documentation to be reviewed and approved by the chief of police and the town administrator.
I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. I think that's all we have, right, for this evening?
That is.
That's it.
And then, do you, yep. So, do we have some reports tonight?
So, I just wanted to let the community know that our fire chief is at it again. Chief Murphy and his staff, specifically in this case Deputy Chief LeChance, were successful in receiving a $68,000 federal grant from the Assistance for Firefighters Grants that will help us purchase, I believe, up to six thermal imaging cameras, which is a safety device for them when they're entering a burning building. So, very important equipment. And it's, and he is so, he and his team are so successful in getting this, this money from outside of our local tax base to help offset these costs. So.
Yeah. And as he was discussing earlier this evening, these were items that were actually on his capital outlay plan. So, they would have been, you know, the request would have been made to have this come out of our, our tax dollars, as Tom's indicated. And so, we really appreciate the extra effort, I think, by Deputy Chief LeChance and Chief Murphy to, to be creative in trying to procure the equipment that's gonna help keep our firefighters safe.
Exactly.
And our residents safe.
That's right. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. So, Tom and I were at the, at Foster School today. There was a meeting with the Massachusetts School Building Authority representatives to take a tour and run through a discussion of expanding on the statement of interest that the school committee has filed in connection with requesting state funding for a renovation or construction of a new school at the Foster School site. I'm telling you that in part because we wandered through classrooms, and several students were, I'm sure, wondering just what we were doing there. So, if you hear that there were a bunch of adults wandering around Foster School, that's why. I have to say, I really applaud both the school committee and the school building, the Foster School Building Committee, for assembling a group of people who could speak to, really, with great particularity, the concerns of both the facility and the ability to operate the educational program at the facility. You know, I think that the level of detail that the folks around that table could provide about the systems, the number of students, the classroom space, I think, again, allows the MSBA staff to fully consider the town's request. So, I was proud to sit around that table. And, you know, I think that we've done and continue to do all we can do, I think, to try to procure state support for what is a very necessary capital project here in town. So. And then, you know, again, my last plea, I think I've made it one other time, is just, and I, you know, I'm as guilty as anyone else. You know, the school buses are out. So, you know, we got used to, I think, the summer, summer traffic pattern around town, which is, you know, changed dramatically both in the morning and the afternoon. So, just be, be aware of that. Anything else?
No.
All right. Well, I hope we, oh, I know. I do have one last thing. Our triple E threat remains at moderate. I don't know whether you wanna chime in on that. But I wanna let you know that our Board of Health continues to monitor this situation on a daily basis. You know, I don't know whether you've been watching the news, but that map seems to spread in, in different ways, and I think has come into different areas than we're traditionally accustomed to. But we are alert to this. I would continue to urge you to, you know, make sure you're doing what you can do to protect yourself from mosquitoes. And we will continue to keep you informed if anything changes with respect to our triple E rating.
Is there, is there any spraying that's planned?
Not right now, no. So, if we were, if they were to find a mosquito in the area that was triple E positive, then they would plan immediate and appropriate spraying. They would also, and it's important for everyone to understand in the public, that when a community reaches that high, that high level of alert, that's when you'll start to see the, and you may be hearing it from some of our neighboring communities, that's when you'll start to see the rescheduling of youth events, sports, sporting events to occur prior to 7 o'clock. But we're at a moderate level. That's a level of, of concern that the state health department is not recommending that we take those, those actions. Right now, they're reiterating what they've told us several times, and that we've repeated. And our Board of Health does a good job, I think, of socializing, is that we should all be out, if you're out in the evening, in long sleeves, long pants, proper, properly applied bug spray and the like. So.
Great. Okay. All right. Well, have a great rest of your evening, everybody, and thanks for joining us tonight. With that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Good night.
Good night.